Good evening, everyone. We'll open tonight's city council work meeting and bring it to order.
I'll make a motion to adopt the next agenda with some changes. Item number three, legal sale of hemp-based THC edible foods and beverages will be number four. The 2023 preliminary budget discussion will be number three. Number six will be an update on the dangerous dog hearing, and number seven will be adjourned.
I'll second.
A motion to second discussion. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion passes. So first item in the next agenda then is the 2023 preliminary budget discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on inputs from the Personnel Committee, Finance Committee, Department Heads, and City Council, the budget model and budget book were prepared and discussed at the July 5th, 2022 city council meeting. The overall 2023 proposed general fund expenditures budget is projected to increase by 4% or $253,800. This expenditure increase would then result in a corresponding levy increase in order to balance the 2023 budget. Overall, the general tax levy, debt service levy, EDA levy, and HRA levy would increase by 4.6% or $284,300. Staff and city council identify three areas that could potentially be used in order to decrease the 2023 levy. These are discussion of any potential for the reduction of the law enforcement contract, eliminate the vacation sick sellback as a city policy, and/or use a portion of the city general funds for levy reduction. There are four scenarios that will be presented to you tonight for discussion. At this time, staff recommends council discuss the options provided for reductions that will be presented for the 2023 budget and provide direction for a levy amount for the 2023 preliminary budget. Mike?
Thanks, Jack. Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, as Jack kind of identified, we went over the budget model at the last meeting, the July 5th meeting, and it was the consensus to kind of put together different models based upon the use of fund balance. We used the target of 50% of the 2023 expenditures as far as how much we could use for fund balance. So that was approximately $145,000 worth of fund balance that could be used to decrease the levy in 2023. And then we ran three other scenarios, one using $100,000, one using $65,000, and then the other one just not using any fund balance at all. So again, those are the four attachments in your packet. With that, I'll entertain any kind of questions or input that you have.
Any questions, council?
Are the sheriffs coming back with anything different?
We have one option that are possible.
You'd like to present? Want to present? Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Lenz, my commander with the Inoka County Sheriff's Office Patrol Division. After the sheriff had initially come and presented our contract, we went back, and I think one of the questions was CSO coverage. So we revisited our CSO coverage. My recommendation would not be to decrease any deputy coverage at this point. I think that the 36 hours of coverage is adequate for the city of your size and the toll load. But we did look at the CSO program and doing a reduction or actually elimination of that program. And ultimately, if that was done, your contract, as it stands with the CSO coverage, is $1,314,000, or $314,000, I'm sorry, $1,314,916. Okay, so that's where it would stand with the CSO. Once we take that out, you look at $1,268,038. So overall, a net savings or reduction of $46,878, which basically is about 3.5% of what the contract would be. So your overall percentage increase that we're looking at from 2021 to 2022 is looking at 7.7%. I believe if my numbers were correct, so if we take that away, you'd be looking at a 4.1% increase for the law enforcement contract. Where that number comes from with the overall $46,000, you get CSO salary savings or hourly rate savings, the vehicle cost, the maintenance cost, along with the insurance cost, and then your ultimate administrative costs, which are 10% of your overall salaries and hourly rates for CSO would go down as well. One of the concerns about that is as we move to the Humane Society for your, for animal control services, it's nice to have that CSO being the person that runs the dogs and the cats down to that area. We would just have to be working with the deputies to make that possible. On a side note to that, we also provide countywide CSO coverage when we're able to. So I'm less concerned about removing the CSO than making any other adjustments. So I'm more comfortable doing that for you guys at this point.
So what a possibility be, since there is countywide CSO, is to say eliminate the CSO in East Bethel, but if a dog call does come in and transportation to the Humane Society is needed, that be charged on a case-to-case basis if that would be needed?
We wouldn't, we don't charge for the countywide CSO for our communities. We typically, it's a nine-to-five type of a shift. It's just depending on if we have the available CSOs and if that, our contract coverages come first. So if the CSO calls in sick, that CSO from the countywide moves into Andover or Columbus or wherever they fill in. So it's not a guarantee that it's going to be here every day. However, we try to provide it when we have the staffing.
Do you know what the hours that we used on CSO were last year? Do we have an idea of what we used last year based compared to what the contract is?
We don't have that yet, and it would be really this year. This is the year we've had discussions with Paul on some CSO issues. And as Sheriff Stewart explained at the last meeting, that these would be analyzed and any reduction in the hours that we contracted for, less the hours received, would be given back to us in a credit. The amount is 20 hours times 52 hours a week, which is 1,040 hours a year. But we don't have the total figures for what we've used them actually for this year based on the 20 hours per week times the weekly total to date.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was a better, if we would be better served reducing it instead of just totally eliminating it if we knew where we were at?
Well, what, from staff's perspective, what services staff lose not having a CSO?
Well, generally, what they do, they stop by and they do mail pickup. They've done bank deliveries. I think the biggest service that we would lose, though, would be serving of citations and things of that nature. For an example, this week, we had to sort of have them deliver two notices of this administrative hearing. So one of them had to go to Assani and the other one had to go to another resident here, which is very time-saving to staff. If we get the full coverage or if we get a deduction for hours we're not used, then I think the CSO is a very valuable service to the city. Saves a lot of staff time from running these types of errands that CSOs can perform. Plus, I think there's also value, too, with that extra patrol car, just the visibility of it, even though these people can't make arrests or they're not carrying a weapon or anything like that. I think just their presence out there adds more to the perception that, you know, we've got more law enforcement people on the roads than deputies.
That's my exact thoughts. I don't want to take a chance with a deputy if we have a dog, you know. You lose a deputy for at least an hour or two, you know, and then, like I said, with Jack, I like that extra car out there. I don't, it's just seeing that car, that probably changes a lot of people's minds, so.
Except that's almost 50 grand a year.
It's 50 grand for, is, that's why I asked reduction. Would reduction make, if we knew what we were using, that would help us determine what we need?
And Mr. Mayor, I mean, the additional thing, too, is that, you know, Highway 65, we get a lot of accidents on 65, and when we talk, in the middle of the winter, it does alleviate the need for two deputies to be there. Our CSOs do help with traffic enforcement, do a great deal of work behind the scenes on those areas so that it allows for that second deputy during the daylight hours to be doing other things as well.
All right, I'll ask it a different way. Do we know what we used, not last year or this year, per se, what we used the previous year in CSO hours?
We probably used the entire 1,040.
We used the entire thing, okay.
We didn't last year just because it was a lack of staff.
She said, yeah, the previous year.
The previous year.
Yeah, right, but this last year is lack of staff.
Correct, yeah.
It wasn't on our part in terms of lesser need, so.
All right.
So in terms of the citations, if we don't have a CSO deliver, who delivers it?
Well, then a deputy would deliver those.
So it'll still be delivered by sheriff's?
Correct.
So a question, if we were to decide not to use the CSO, but six months down the road, we change our mind, say that's not a good thing, would we be able to reinstate that in our contract?
I'm sure we could work with the city on that. Obviously, we want to work with you. We've had a great relationship with the city. And so however you guys deem to provide these public safety services to your city, we'd work with you on that.
So we just, that wouldn't be out of luck for the entire year until our next contract comes up?
Well, except we wouldn't have budgeted for it.
Yeah, we wouldn't have budgeted for it.
But if needed, that's what I'm asking.
Could we find the money and put it back?
Paul, what are reactions in the other contract communities in terms of the budget or your budget increase?
Well, some of our cities are seeing a significant increase, a lot more significant than the city of Nowland saw. A very significant number. Let me give you a little bit of example of some of these that we're seeing is they range from a 30% increase of services. Now, of course, that changes because Nowland is doing some different things. To, I think the lowest is a 2% increase based on these numbers. And so what we try to do as well is we get that proactive, proactive chart, making sure that we look at the calls for service, make sure that we have time for them to be proactive. But, you know, you're at a 7% increase right basically in the middle with the other cities. Many of them are just maintaining the same operations that they have. The only other, the city of Andover, who had a really high proactive rate, they decreased deputies' hours by eight.
And as an example, Ham Lake's increase was 8%, Oak Grove's was 9.8. Now, Oak Grove did add some additional hours to their patrol coverage.
So that changing scope, so that's not apples and apples, but.
And one of the things that we did for each community, and I'm not sure if the sheriff mentioned this, but we did revisit the vehicle maintenance and the vehicle component. And so what we did in, you know, to try to buffer some of these increases from the salaries, we increased the, for your 24-hour car that we typically replaced every year, we pushed that out to two years. Your 12-hour car that you have, we pushed that from two years to three years. Number one, our cars are holding up better for the most part. We're driving a little bit less miles with our 12-hour shifts than we had before. So those are some of the decreases. So your police-equipped vehicles are at .83, which is before you had a 1.5 number on there as well.
Okay, any other questions?
What is it, 20 hours for next year for the CSO?
That's the proposal in the contract.
Okay. I just want to, I mean, go down to 10? I don't, I don't know if that's an option or cut it in half or.
I think anything's an option at this point.
As an, Mr. Mayor, council member here tonight, one example is Columbus does every Friday. And then they do also Fridays and then every, you know, every other Wednesday or something similar. So there are, I mean, obviously, like I said, these are public safety services that you guys can decide how you want to utilize them. Again, for Columbus, as most times their packets go out on Friday, and so that they can get the packets out on Friday, or they deem that to be the most important day. So certainly, we can work with you if you needed to cut it in half or however you guys want to operate the CSO program. We could certainly work with you on that.
Okay. On the sheriff's contract, is there any other questions? Great. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you for coming back.
So on, Mike, just so I'm clear, your attachment four, which uses $145,000 of the fund balance in that model, I think you said this, but is that like the excess amount over the 50% reserve?
If you use the complete, the 145,000, that would bring you down to 50% of the 2023 expenditures.
Okay.
Yep. So that would be kind of the limit that we would recommend using, or the high end, so.
And there would be nothing in reserve for an emergency or anything else at that point?
You'd essentially be using it all for cash flow purposes.
I don't, I don't like that.
No, I like the 100, the 100, and then you got something to, for backup.
Yeah, that was my thoughts, too.
And I hesitate. Yes, $46,000 is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but I think having that extra person and, as Commander said, and routes, Highway 65 is just getting worse, even having that car on the road out there. I hesitate to make any changes on that, on public safety.
Well, I mean, the CSO, how long have we had a CSO program?
Probably.
Because we haven't always had it.
No, I'm going to guess around 2008, somewhere along in there.
But we also had animal control up till this year.
Well, that has nothing, to me, that has nothing to do with it. But in terms of the CSO, I mean, it, it, it's a good program. It helps the city in doing items. It helps the sheriff's office in training, you know, future officers. And in doing that, it helps the community because, you know, these may be officers that may be serving in East Bethel or surrounding communities. So I, it's a, it's a good program, I agree. But it is, there's a cost to it. And at a time where, you know, we're seeing a high increase in this sheriff's contract, which is driving our levy up, basically, so. I mean, to me, it's worthwhile revisiting, you know, either changing or canceling our part of that program. I mean, there's tasks that'll be done by staff, not as efficient.
This would be a one-year thing. I think Mr. Stewart said next year would be 3%, so I think everything, you know, would come back down to, you know, some kind of normal then. It just, you know.
Yeah, next year's is 3%, he did say that.
Yeah, he said 3% next year, so.
Well, which is what we've kept our increases at all along, including this year. So that's why it's been hard for us to accept the 8% when we negotiated a 3% increase, so. And kept the levy down, so. Okay, any other discussion?
So what kind of feedback are you looking for tonight?
Well, either further discussion or a recommendation to go with one of the four options that Mike laid out for budget reduction using the general fund and/or the other category of that vacation sick sellback. So we're looking for direction on that tonight. If we need time, we can make this part of the next council meeting discussion. We'd like to present the preliminary budget for approval on September the 12th. So we also have a work meeting the 1st of September that this could be considered additionally to make any changes. But whatever direction you can give us regarding those four scenarios is hopefully what we would like to have.
Mike, I know we talked about this, but how many people does the vacation sellback affect? It's a handful now?
It is all of our non-union employees, so I'd have to count that up. But it's roughly, we'll say, 14.
And that would only be for the non-union employees?
Yep.
Union employees would still have that benefit?
The non-union employees have that benefit option. The union employees do not have that option at all. So theirs is a use-it-or-lose-it type policy, and then the non-union employees actually can sell their vacation back.
I'll ask it a different way. How many people do you think this would affect that use the program?
Yep, good question. I'm going to bring it up from last year. So essentially, what we're speaking to on this, there's two different kind of policies that this pertains to. One is an employee vacation payout that, again, is only our non-union employees. So at the end of the year, if they are over 240 hours in vacation, they have the ability to actually sell that back, and it goes into a healthcare savings plan. And again, the number of employees that actually utilized this last year, 2021, was four. So we had four employees that actually utilized this. And again, this is going to be, what was really kind of eye-opening is, you know, COVID actually, it hit, and our workload increased and the ability to actually take vacation decreased. So then more people were apt to actually utilize this. So we had four employees utilize it in 2021. And then the other component then is just pertaining to the city administrator. So at the end of a calendar year, if they're over the 640-hour cap, they're able to sell back half of their sick time. So those are the two kind of policies that we're talking about here. So again, what we've averaged again is roughly, we'll say, $20,000 in annual expenditures based on these policies in your 2023 budget. I actually budgeted that at about $30,000, so just another ratcheted-up increase. But as we continue to go on, on down the line with this, the more people could obviously tap into this as far as being eligible as vacation balances grow and whatnot. So it's, I think, a good, good chance, or a good idea here just to kind of analyze this policy in something and see if this is something you want to continue on moving forward, so.
Well, in everything else, we treat our union employees and our non-union employees pretty much the same in everything else, in their pay, their grades, their... So I'm not sure why in this category we make an exception.
Originally, this was offered to the union employees, but they did not want to participate in this. Again, as Mike pointed out, the COVID kind of exacerbated this issue, and we feel it's not sustainable for the long run.
So there will be a net, there'll be an effect, right, if that's eliminated in that people would be more apt than to use vacation time and be away from the office. And same thing with sick time. And so there's also probably an intangible measure of loss of productivity because people now will want it for sure. On the vacation side, they're not going to lose it, they're going to take it, so.
And that was one of the reasons, too, that it was instituted, too, was to incentivize people to be here because we do have a small staff and that they could sell their time back if they didn't take it.
So it's not a benefit that we had for just the non-union employees. We offered it to everyone, and they just didn't want it, so. How long have we had this policy?
2011 or 2012.
And was there a particular trigger at that point that made the policy become effective?
It was when we started enabling or participating in the health savings plan that we have, the program. And the union did not want to participate in that either.
I believe people should take their vacation. It's, it's a good break, and I realize we're a small staff, but as we've done some incredibly good hiring this year, I think there's a great opportunity for some cross-training and for not as many big holes when somebody's missing. Obviously, the four people on here are high-ranking employees within the city. I just think people need to take their vacations, and I would be willing to deal with eliminating this policy.
It's definitely worth considering, so.
Well, we could try it for a year. If we don't like it or get negative results, we can always reestablish it.
Well, and the time to do it is now because you want to give them the opportunity, you know. They can, this will be the last year they can buy it out. And then into next year, you want to give them some advance notice, six months' notice. This is what's going to happen. And go from there. This year's already budgeted and finished, so.
Exactly.
You're the biggest user of it, what are your thoughts?
Well, again, I think with the COVID effects that it's had on this, it's not sustainable. Over the long run, it's just increasing burdens that we have, and I have no objections eliminating it. I think from a city standpoint and a budgetary standpoint, it's what we have to do. And if it goes on and you have people that want to work every day, then it's a way that this could increase to a substantial amount in their budgets.
I think one of the biggest issues with this policy is that it creates such an unknown when it comes to budget time. It's, do I budget for four people selling it back or do I budget for 16 people selling it back?
Yeah, exactly.
And there is no cap on it, so it's just a, you know, we can just look at what happened historically and kind of just base it on that. But otherwise, you know, when we look at.
Anything over 240 hours, well.
Yep.
So you have 20 grand on this table, but in the write-up, it says a $33,000 budget reduction. What's the rest from?
Yep, so essentially, then, we went department by department. So I went through each one of their employees with the department head, and we kind of just analyzed where people's vacation balances were and what we anticipated them using up, and that's kind of the number we came up with, so.
So if we put that, if we put that back in there and the portion of the funds, the portion of the general fund balance would be 133, right?
Well, that's with one option.
With one option, that is one option. Well, I'd like to see that go away and use a portion of the general fund balance and get it somewhere at three, under three, somewhere there. That would be my opinion.
I have no issues with that.
Mr. Mayor?
What's that? I'm sorry, Mr..
Oh, I said I'd like to get rid of that policy and see, use the rest of our general fund to get the levy.
I heard that, I heard that. I just heard Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I was just asking your opinion.
Back on a law enforcement contract, you don't have to get up, but is it fair to say if we cut it from 20 to 10 hours, it's not cutting it in half because you still have to have a vehicle and maintenance and stuff?
Correct.
Yeah, we're just cutting the salary in half.
The mileage, the mileage will be less, so your maintenance and your gas will be less than a 10-hour purchase.
Right, but you still have to purchase, do we get charged for half a vehicle or? We still have to have the vehicle? That's my point.
Correct, it's still a dedicated vehicle that's in the shop.
Okay.
For those 10 hours.
Okay. So it's not, instead of 46,000, it's not a 23,000? It's more, it'll cost more than that, it's less ridiculous, okay, okay.
There's just a certain amount of fixed cost.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm that, so.
That's why I'm thinking I don't want to mess with that. I, I don't want to mess with that.
I just don't want to lose a deputy to going down Humane Society. That's, that's the thing.
That's, that's the thing taxpayers are paying for a deputy to be in the city. And, you know, you lose a deputy for, you know, I don't know how long it takes.
At least-
I mean, I know you got a county wide, but, you know, if something happened, you know.
But we don't have that many animal-
No.
Calls, right?
But.
Does it, dozen a year?
Yeah, about one a month. This, I think this is the second one we've taken to the Humane Society.
Yep. So the, you know, to me, I'm going back to look at that forty-seven thousand dollars for a CSO.
Yeah.
You know, and there's benefits to it.
Right.
But it's not a, it's a car in the city. It's an extra car to see, I see that, for twenty hours a week. And it provides some staff support, but. We just gotta get creative and getting the budget levy down, so. And I, and I'm more in favor of using that reserve because that's, that's what it's for. You know.
They did pay it.
Remember, it's a forty percent to fifty percent goal. It's not, you know, we're not wiping out the checkbook. It, it's an excess of reserve and we've had almost as high as sixty percent. And it's not every year, it's gonna be this year. And, you know, I think up until, sorry, up until we got the sheriff's contract and their increase, you know, we're gonna be able to keep it low. But it, it's a rainy day fund and it's raining, so.
And what do you feel about the vacation policy?
I'm fine, I'm fine with, I'm fine with eliminating that, so.
And then keeping the CSO?
Well, as I said, I think we need to, I think we need to look at paring back or eliminating it, so.
Then on the levy, you wanted to use all forty-six thousand?
Yeah.
Or go down to a hundred?
Yeah.
Take the hundred thousand or?
Bring it down.
Attachment number three to three-
Excess of our reserve policy.
The whole thing?
Yeah. Because it's, it's not the whole thing. There's another ten percent there.
Yeah, but I thought he said he didn't want to-
Reserve policy is forty percent.
I thought he said he didn't want to go under fifty percent.
Well, of course, the finance director doesn't want it to go down.
I'm just thinking-
I'm not gruesome, I'm just saying, yeah, you always-
Knock on wood, nothing ever happens.
I don't want to-
It's not dangerous.
I'd like to have something in emergency case, you know.
I don't want to go below fifty either. But that's my background is-
We can say something's never gonna happen, but that'll be the time something happens, so. I, I'm on the three percent.
So, so in order to put that at risk, we'd have to have a humongous expense, right?
In the first six months of the year?
That can't be managed over six months of the year.
The first six months of the year is where it would have to hit.
Well, it's, these, these are funds that we don't want to tap unless there's an absolute emergency. But remember too, we have other funds, equipment replacement fund, and it can be used to supplement anything if it's a dire emergency. Then exceeded this amount, we'd hope that would never happen because we really want to pay those funds back to that account.
Yeah, you'd have to pay them back.
So there are other funds in the city that could be used in a dire emergency.
Right, I mean, i- i- if the fire truck, we lose a fire truck. We've got the equipment to replace our fund, we can tap on it. And then you just use work to replace it. It doesn't affect the operation of the city.
Now, the, the only other thing to keep into consideration is whatever we increase in revenues for this year is what we're gonna have to match next year. So there's gonna be a little bit of a hole in the revenue budget. So it's kind of like kicking the can down the road.
Either we deal with it this year or we're gonna end up dealing with it next year.
But if there's a time to kick the can is when we're facing a higher levies. This is the time that we have to address it. And we'll be, we'll be back to normal next year, supposedly, right? Paul?
I, I just spoke in looking at the Columbus contract, which has about ten hours per week on average. Their cost per, of a vehicle per year is twenty-four hundred. So we would pro-rate that down for you from the seventy hundred for you, which would also decrease your rate.
So, so it's probably a twenty thousand dollar savings instead of forty-six, okay.
As far as the CSOs, in order to kind of keep somewhat the coverage we have, would it make more sense? He's saying Columbus uses a Friday. What about a Monday, Wednesday, Friday? That would cut it down to twelve hours. And in that way, we have access to the most, at least every other day.
Well, it seems to me that it's, it's also maybe a bit of an easier change to make for this year because the sheriff's department's already having a harder time staffing it anyway. We may only end up with ten hours of coverage over the year. But yet we budgeted it for twenty and created more reserve than we didn't need. So, I mean, it, it's almost like matching, you know, the, our supply that we have to, to use, so. And so, and if it's a one-year thing, it's a one-year thing. Cutting the CSO in half's not gonna... Having a CSO here for one day a week or two days a week and so I'll catch a percentage of the accidents and things like that, so. Just realized that there's a substantial cost for it. I mean, it's, it's almost, it's, you know, it's more savings in the vacation. It's, it's... I don't think, I don't think our needs are as strong as they were two years ago for a CSO, what comes down to it. And if we don't have the needs, then you cut back. Would we have done it anyways? Probably not, you know, but because of certain things come up and that's how we address budgets. You gotta make adjustments somewhere.
So that would take seventy, that'd take eighty thousand dollars if we did. We eliminated the CSO and we eliminated the vacation. That's eighty thousand dollars. Are you suggesting we take that eighty thousand and then we take plus the hundred and forty thousand and see where we're at?
Well, it'd be, well, I think it would be nice to see where all those numbers come in. I, I would, I would do it with, you know, I would do a snare without the CSO and then a ten-hour or a hawker that works out better for staff. But to cut the CSO hours back to where we think it'd be realistic or more in line with what our actual hours were this year, so. And there's just some parts of the, of the CSO benefit or services that we're just gonna have to do without then too, so.
So back to the drawing board and come back with more scenarios-
Well, it's not really drawn, but it's just what is coming up with, I think it's just a couple of them, so.
It's a tweak. And see where we're at.
Good there.
Let's see what tweaks you can make.
You know the direction.
We're getting there, so. Can you just put it on the council meeting? Council, yeah. And Paul, if, once you come up with a, how many hours you want the CSO to be, whether it's ten or twelve, whatever it is, can you work with the sheriff's office and come up, just with that one number, what would it be?
Yeah.
All right?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anything awesome budget? Okay, thanks, guys. All right, now we're back to item four, legal sale of hemp-based THC edible foods and beverages discussion.
On July first, two thousand twenty-two, certain hemp-based edible cannabis products containing THC became legal in Minnesota. City Attorney Chris Nelson and Christine Benson updated council on July the eleventh on the impacts this legislation may have on and within the city. They specifically stated that the law making edible cannibal, cannabinoid products legal did not prohibit cities from regulating their sale. Mrs. Benson reported that the League of Minnesota Cities has encouraged cities to work with their attorneys to decide what, if any, local regulations on THC edibles would be best suited for their municipalities. City Attorney Nelson reported that there were very little restrictions other than the age needed for the purchase and the dosage under the current legislation. Nelson noted, as it now stands, any business could offer these products. He noted, noted his office was working on model regulations and informed council that it currently fell upon the cities to come up with their own set of regulations. Nelson also reported that liquid THC was legal as long as it's considered a food product, but it is not legal in a vapor form. City council indicated they would like to consider options to address this issue, which could include, but may not be limited to, amending the city code to regulate the sale of THC edibles or enact a moratorium temporarily prohibiting the sale hemp-derived THC food and beverages in the city in order to provide additional time to study this matter. There's a list of cities that we have obtained from the city attorney that indicate that they have either passed or considering adopting a moratorium to study this issue in more depth. And this appears to be the direction many cities are going. And at this time, council is requested to discuss this item and provide, provide direction to staff as to action on this matter. Mrs. Benson is here to add to this presentation or answer any questions you may have regarding this discussion.
Okay. Any questions? Anything new on the subject or we lost week?
Not really. I know of a couple cities who have decided to just move forward with licensing. I know Bloomington is one of them. I have a lot of experience with research and I couldn't come up with the cities that haven't adopted them because it's not in the media. So I just want to, I guess, add that that's something that's hard to track because it's not something that the media's picking up on. But there are at least some cities who have decided not to adopt the moratoriums.
So that there hasn't been any, the, the, put in place a licensing procedure?
Not yet. As far as I know, I think it was Golden Valley's city attorney who spoke at the work, working group call that I was on. They are kind of simultaneously proposing the licensing scheme and the moratorium for the council to consider, like, when it comes officially to the meeting. Because staff have been able to prepare that based on the tobacco licensing in the city. And that does seem to be what other cities are doing as well as, like, can we license this under the tobacco scene? Like, how much time will it take us? And that's something that's kind of going on at a staff level and then being proposed as options.
How many tobacco licenses do we have, Jack?
I'd have to double-check that, but we have, I believe-
Less than a dozen?
Right around a dozen, correct.
Right around a dozen.
How many I signed over here? So, I mean, I understand why we do want to do a moratorium. But if it looks like the, the path that cities are taking is the licensing similar to tobacco, it, it doesn't seem to be too complex to put together. And, and for the moratorium, there's always the risk of we pass moratorium and then now all of a sudden, there's no urgency to get something done because there's moratorium, so.
And there's an obligation to do a study if you adopt a moratorium.
Well, that's right, you have to study it, yeah.
So that's inevitably slows down the licensing process.
So to me, I think the licenses, make it similar to tobacco with the twenty-one and, and it's the same. So, so that way, there's the compliance checks too and things like that. I don't know what everyone else think.
That's kind of what I was about to say along the same lines. So I, I don't understand why we couldn't just do a similar to tobacco.
Yeah, just pass it and-
So I did have kind of a couple of questions on the attachment that was given as far as selling at, this question three. Could my city's municipal liquor store sell the edible cannab, cannabinoid products? As we do not have a municipal liquor store, but there are liquor stores in the city. Is... So can these be sold at a liquor store or not?
The AGA has said they cannot. If it's licensed as an exclusive liquor store, there's a statute that lays out specifically the types of things that can be sold. And the ones that they, you know, considered were beverages are allowed to be sold, food products, and then like mixers that don't contain alcohol. And they decided that edibles are not considered a food product for exclusive liquor stores. And beverages with THC in them, like the seltzers that are being sold, are not considered beverages or mixers under the exclusive liquor store statute.
So even though the, a liquor store can sell tobacco products, they would not be able to sell?
Right.
Okay.
Whether the legislature will choose to change that?
Okay. Enforcement and public safety, question eight.
Brian, can we, can I ask quick before we get off that one? At, at the end of that section, it talks about the, that the league recommends a city refrain from selling products at municipal liquor stores. Why is that?
So there is a lack of clarity whether this type of product is something that can be... The way that the statutes are written, basically, nobody knows what's legal and what's not very well. So if it's considered marijuana that's being sold because the products, it's so hard to test them and figure out if it's above that point three percent of delta nine, then you're selling marijuana. And that's illegal. So that's kind of part of it is there's a possibility and a risk that you are selling illegal products under the federal law. And cities rely heavily on federal funding and are federally, like, subject to regulation. So that's some of the concern. And if you do get into selling some of those products, they can't be processed with credit. It's a cash-only basis. So I think those are some of the concerns is that it's just so poorly regulated on top of the fact that municipal liquor stores are exclusive liquor stores.
Oh, municipal liquor stores?
Yes.
Not just all liquor stores, okay.
Some liquors, so like, a lot of liquor stores are exclusive liquor stores? Like, exclusive liquor, I'm, I'm losing the term. But exclusive liquor stores. So anyone that's licensed as an exclusive, is it liquor store? Am I saying that? I've said it so many times. If they're licensed as that exclusive sales, then they can't, you know, sell these products.
Because it would seem to me, since liquor stores are already fairly regulated, that that would be a better place to have a regulated substance sold rather than that any-
You'd think so.
-convenience store or gas station anywhere. Now we've got twenty things to watch rather than the ten that we're already tracking, you know? But this, I, I didn't pick it up, but this says municipal liquor stores. So private liquor stores?
So I believe private liquor stores are also, many of them are exclusive liquor stores.
Okay.
So i- if they exclusively sell liquor?
Yeah, if they're licensed as an exclusive liquor store, not like a convenience store or something like that, it's my understanding that they can't sell this type of product or the seltzers.
I think maybe the distinction there is we do have several stores that are combinations. But the liquor stores have to be separate and isolated from the convenience part of it. So they might not be able to sell it on the liquor side, but they could sell it on the convenience side.
Which is not a liquor store anyway, so it wouldn't follow.
Yeah.
One, one other thing that I'd just like to mention while we're just throwing the moratorium thing out is, is that Chris and Christine have indicated that there's probably gonna be some large changes and clarification in the legislation coming up. And whatever we enact now may have to be changed to match that and correspond with that come this spring or so, next summer.
Well, that-
They're gonna have to clarify some of this. I mean, they, they just, it's no-brainer. They have to clarify this because nobody knows what to do.
But I suspect that language would have to be involved with, in the license that, that such regulations may change in the future. Something to that, that effect.
Well, and I think the bottom line is, do we go through the licensing procedure now and take the time to do it? Because it will be a little more involved, I, I believe it'll be a little more involved in the tobacco license. And, or do we wait, get a moratorium and wait until the legislature figures out what this really means and then enact it?
Oh, is the legislator, or, so they even acting on any of this?
Next year's a bonding year, so they probably won't enact on it.
Yeah, there's a lot of question about what the legislature is gonna do. There's a lot of dissatisfied legislators with how this was passed. So again, we experienced a lot of gridlock. This was one of the lowest producing legislative sessions as far as passing of bills. So if that is a predictor of what we're looking at next year, I mean.
Who knows?
Yeah.
You know, there hasn't been a ton of outcry, which I'm really surprised. I thought there was a ton of outcry because.
I don't think there's a ton of people, I don't think there's a ton of people public. I mean, we know as sitting in cities and the cities know, but.
But even from the, even from the legislators, there's not a lot of, I was fooled kind of thing, we got changes, you know, it's like, I don't think, I don't think that's going to change. I think, I think it's here to stay, but.
And from the discussions I've been a part of from the league, like they're all for, they advocate for city-based, city-level regulation and allowing cities that authority. So as far as, they've guided cities to act, it's doing a tobacco licensing type scheme and then advocacy at the Capitol to kind of do tobacco licensing for THC at the state level like they do right now. Does that make sense? So like they license tobacco state and they allow city to do it, the same with THC.
Brian, do you have another question?
Yes. On enforcement. States, in addition, the new law limits the sale of CBD and THC products to persons over the age of 21. The sale of these products to a person under the age of 21 is a misdemeanor level crime, which is to be prosecuted by the county attorney. So there's two questions on this. What is the penalty for either selling tobacco or alcohol to someone under 21? Is it at the same level as this?
I believe so because of the way that it was, but I'm not, I don't think it's the exact same statute that is the penalty though, because this is, because THC isn't classified in the same way that like I was talking about, there's state-level tobacco and liquor sales licensing. And there's not for this. I'm not incredibly familiar with prosecution, but we've spoken to our prosecutors and the biggest issue that stood out to us here is that cities don't have any authority to prosecute at this point in time. And it's difficult to find a county attorney who's going to be prosecuting these cases for all of these matters. And there's only one person in the state right now who's tasked with enforcement of this law. So that was actually something.
Is that something we really want to tell people?
So, oh, the retailers are aware of this. I've personally located a shop that's selling like uncompliant edibles.
Edibles.
I know other city attorneys, that's kind of what city attorneys are having to do because it's like, what does it actually look like out there? And so there are some that are selling legal products, but some that are blatantly not selling legal products. That's something Chris and I were talking about, meeting with our prosecution team to see if we can put together some sort of ordinance so that cities would have a level of enforcement because that seems to be, you know, the concern for people is not so much this was legalized, but that there's no one to do anything about the fact that people are selling illegal products under the statute. So that's another alternative.
So that instead of prosecuting as a misdemeanor and county attorney?
It's fines.
We could send out fines like we do with.
Well, you'd have to adopt an ordinance.
Yes.
Yes.
But as, as long as we have the language in there that we'd be able to have the power.
I mean, there's lots of other things that, you know, are regulated at a county level, but because there's just not enforcement at that level, that's where cities have adopted ordinances. Like it's technically, public nuisances and such are regulated at a state level, but it provides cities with more authority and swift opportunity to act if they have some sort of ordinance regulating it themselves.
Okay. And with this, is it the employee or business that's charged?
I believe it's the business that's responsible for their employees. It's not a drug deal, so it's not like it would be something necessarily to the individual, but more as a violation as a distributor. But this is something, again, that was not, it's not a controlled substance. So it's, again, one of those, it's under the board of pharmacy, not, you know, alcohol and gambling enforcement. So that's again why I'm, why I'm not really clear on how you enforce violations of pharmaceuticals.
Well, could, could we do it just similar to the way you do cigarette and alcohol? Is it, you know, the sheriff doesn't comply and uses underage person and buys it? I mean, it doesn't matter whether it's controlled or not. They clearly can't sell it less than 21, they violated that law and their license, so.
Yeah.
That means to me, I have, I have a hard time thinking, why do anything other than how we do tobacco licensing?
Yeah.
You know, because it's, it's straightforward, it's.
Well, it's tobacco, doesn't that both employee and the store?
Both employee and the store.
Well, it should, yeah.
Both the employee and the store. I think where it gets a little more.
Same thing for the alcohol, it's the same thing. It's employee and store.
But right now, law enforcement is struggling because they can't do anything. And they voice that, that's what we've heard, that our prosecutors have heard that. Like what do we do?
Well, at the very least, until they, until they get those statutes in, we can pull the license.
Right.
Yeah, issue fines.
Well, you pull a license and if they're, if they're selling it, then that, then that becomes more of a misdemeanor, I think, so.
I, I'm not sure. I can look it up if you want.
But, but that's the idea, so.
I think the bigger problem is the places, as Christine said, that are blatantly, I mean blatantly selling everything and anything that's edible.
But this isn't going to matter at all because they're going to do it anyway, so. Whether there's a license word or not.
Yeah, but then do we enforce it? Do we enforce the fact that they're not following state guidelines?
No, I don't think that's a city issue. We're just licensing agents, so.
Yeah, if, if we have an ordinance that pertains to our license and our ordinance states already have this license, you can't sell to anyone under 21. And we have the sheriff go in and have someone underage go in and that's just proof positive.
Well, that's the compliance check.
Yeah. That's where it would comply, whether the products they're selling or not, that's another situation.
That's another issue. I think that's a bigger problem on how to enforce that. But right now, no one knows how to enforce it because the only lab is in Andover and they're not testing anything right now.
And then another question I had was on question 18, could cities adopt a moratorium prohibiting the sale manufacturing or distribution of cannabinoids? If there's one thing I would want to put a moratorium on, it would be manufacturing in the city. Until obviously we can get something rolled up.
We don't have any plants right now, do we? No. There's, there are some wrong, they're, they're wrong.
They are.
They're not regulated, not, they're regulated by the state already.
In 2014, we got a notice from need that there was a company that wanted to locate in the northern metro area to produce cannabis products. And they were looking for a response. We got it on Friday afternoon, they wanted a response on Monday. So we said, you know, this has had to be approved with city council, we couldn't do this. So there are those around. I don't know how many of them are. I think the state licensed a certain number of them. I don't think there's any around here, but there are some close by, I'm sure.
So what would be your concern?
That if we don't have any ordinance relating to it, can it still be allowed?
But why wouldn't you allow it? It's a manufacturer.
It's manufacturing, but if there's certain rules of how to control it, how to, lots of other questions.
I would think that state licensing controls that.
So there's a certain level of state licensing, but there's a lot of, there's a CLE that I attended back in 2020 before COVID. And there were a couple cities in the southwestern metro who had some. And there are some horror stories from around the country of these facilities and they don't have proper controls. So it's kind of up to the city to some extent to decide what level of control, not necessarily like, yes, you can have a facility, but what the city looks and smells like is the big thing. And that's what I was talking to Chris earlier today. And his suggestion was to consider conditional use permits for that type of manufacturing in the city if you wanted to develop some sort of structure like that, that would likely be an option.
We should at least have something in our ordinance and codes that addresses it.
Or can we wait till we actually have an application?
I think that's where it's kind of up to you. But if the application comes in before you act, then there are, you know, more restrictions. That's kind of the point of the moratoriums is if something comes in, if they've already done sort of application, it's a little bit, it's challenged more if it's in reaction to a specific business selling it versus if it's just a reaction to the fact that, you know, this is something that people are probably or are thinking about coming, kind of like what he mentioned, it was like, you know, they're thinking about this area, are you interested? So that would be a time where you could adopt a moratorium and it wouldn't necessarily be you trying to regulate that specific business, like that specific person versus like just the field more generally. But I also, that's the extent of my knowledge. I'm not sure about the nuances of the timeline for those matters. If someone files something with the city and it's zoned for manufacturing, I'm not sure what kind of level of control you'd be able to put from an after the fact, but that is something that we can look into if you're interested. Maybe Jack knows some, are you?
From, you know, what's permitted in our light industrial zones, this is an area that's not addressed.
So it's wide open? If somebody came in in our light industrial zone, they could?
Well, if it's not addressed, it's not permitted.
Okay.
So that's not permitted right now anyways?
No, there's, there's nothing that mentions anything about this type of product. And I don't think, and I would have to double check if this reclassified as an agricultural use or agricultural production, I don't think it would follow that, but we can check that and verify that though.
They're making candy, right?
Yeah, I know, that's it. They're making candy, I mean, that's, it's, they're making cookies, they're, it's, you know?
I'd rather just be on ahead of it rather than trying to react to it.
Well, Christine, if, if we pass moratorium, we have to do the study.
And what does that entail?
What's that entail?
That's what I asked, Chris.
As I asked because I remember when, before the first cell tower came in.
Yeah.
We passed a moratorium and we were like the guinea pig, we were the ones that did the first study and get the, we drafted the ordinances for it and everything, so.
And everybody else.
It was, it was a lot of work.
That's cool. So you would have to direct the planning commission to do a study or hire a third-party consultant. And I just wanted to mention, I was looking at, because I know we were looking at these league FAQs and there were ones discussing moratoriums. And the memo on this from the league does say you can't do this just to delay. So just like taking some caution about what you're, you know, discussing and the reasoning behind doing some moratoriums is it's not, it's not to delay, it's because the city is genuinely interested in performing a study on the issue.
So I wouldn't say doing a moratorium on manufacturing, but at least as Jack says, not addressing our codes right now, so it wouldn't be outlawed. So I, excuse, excuse me, it would be not allowed, but it should be addressed at some point.
Well, you would, we would do the moratorium for the purpose of studying and drafting legislation for it. So you have to have that endpoint, you gotta have a purpose for, for moratorium. I mean, the biggest moratorium we had is when we did sewer water. You know, that was, that was huge. I mean, we stopped all development in the city for, for almost three years.
Yeah.
Until we can get the comp plant, but it was a lot of study. I mean, we had a goal, you know, and.
Well, the other thing that I can see happening if we were to license it, and this may be totally off the wall, but I can see businesses who are looking at doing this or how already are doing it behind the scenes, going to these cities like Golden Valley, Bloomington, if we come up with licensing, moving into those cities that have licensing. Or on the other hand, moving into the cities who have done nothing because then they have free rein.
And I think we should come back and ask ourselves, why are we going to regulate this? And I think it really comes down to the age issue. So we, so these aren't sold to the kids, just like cigarettes and liquor. It's not a social issue, it's protecting, making sure the kids don't get hold of it. I don't know how much we need to study, but.
And, and the way it's set up now, and correct me if I'm wrong, is Dollar General can sell it.
I believe so.
You know, and it's, I think what we, we were looking at is kind of getting ahead of the curve, tied to the tobacco licensing's issue, so we could limit the, we can also limit the number of businesses that can sell it too.
That's, that's, we can limit how many licenses we sell.
That way we can kind of get ahead of the curve and not be wide open to some of the things that want to say, okay, here's East Bethel, they don't have any regulations. Let's all, let's move in here real quick and be able to sell it at any of these retail locations.
Unfair question, but how much effort, how much time would it take to draft an ordinance that mimics our tobacco license ordinance?
I don't think it would take very long. There are model ordinances from states that have legalized this and many cities have literally copied and pasted their tobacco just as a starting point and then molded that with their model ordinance. There's one in California, of course, it's just for marijuana overall, not specifically edibles like Minnesota decided to do. But there's enough templates out there that I don't foresee it taking an incredible amount of time unless you have some sort of policies that require certain levels of studies and public hearings. That's been the slowdown for other cities that they've, that are considering these are like what other steps do we have to make before adopting an ordinance like this, aside from traditional ordinance adopting?
See, I'd rather, I'd rather put the, the energy right now into getting a licensing in place and then as things change, as this issue's obviously going to change over the next year or two, then we adapt, adapt to, but at least we have that, the least level of control we can have and have it.
Actually, I've been talking to Chris and we, I think we could come up with a sample ordinance by the last meeting in August meeting, if not the next meeting if it was required. So we could get one.
So we, because we have to go through two hearings on the moratorium, so we would probably have a licensing done long before we even get a moratorium passed.
Which I think is why Golden Valley, Maria Sastneros, I've worked with her a lot, that's what they proposed, was the simultaneous, you know, technically you have this option, but we've already have the licensing scheme ready if you're, if you're ready for it.
So what do you think?
I like licensing.
Licensing ordinance?
Yep.
I mean, a moratorium, they can challenge that and you, you know, you're just gonna, could drag on, drag on.
And then if you don't license, like if Dollar General is selling it, this is like what our biggest fear is, like, we don't know what would happen because it hasn't happened before. But if you don't license someone who was already selling legal products, you don't know how they're going to react and that's a liability and a risk to consider.
So the quicker we can get something pulled together, the better off we're going to be.
Right, right. I mean, to me, this is not this, you know, crazy issue we have to jump on, you know, it's not this big fight to do more, more, to me, a moratorium is a pretty substantial step, you know, for a city to do. So whether it's a small issue or a big issue, because you're telling everyone you can't do something, so. I just assume.
Well, and I can see quick trip doing it and.
Getting the licensing done, so. Then we'll work out the details on enforcement, so. In a month from now, I'm sure we're going to know a lot more how to do this, right? So.
You'll be back.
Yep.
Anything else on this item? Okay.
No.
Christine, thanks for being here tonight.
Sure. And I'll be sticking around for discussions on the dangerous dog if there's any questions.
Thank you. Twofer. Thank you. Two for, okay. Now we're on number five, code enforcement update.
In your, in your packet, we've updated the code enforcement activities. They've been underway for the past, for 2022. The big update is for the five major ones. Actually, there were six. One of them is off the list. It's reliable trucking. They have actually gone out of business and they're moving. So they're not on this list anymore. However, they had come into, they're working their way into getting in compliance is what was required of them. But all appliance recycling, 1-8641, Highway 65. The owner is still working with us. They've removed quite a bit of material. They have their fire lanes open. This is one that's probably never going to ever be in complete compliance because of the nature of the business. But they are cooperating with us and trying to keep making progress and they are. Progress is sometimes a little incremental, but they haven't gone backwards. So we view this as a major step forward with them. You don't see the junk overflowing out in their parking lot anymore. So we'll continue to work with them to make sure that they continue on this pace to make as many improvements as they can to come in compliance with the ordinance. 1-425 Sims Road Northwest. This is the new one man's treasure location. It was owned by Ronnie Brasshead. Unfortunately, Ronnie passed away here recently. So we're currently working with the family. They've expressed an interest in continued efforts to clean that place up. There has been progress made on that too. The big issue though is with the abandoned fuel tanks there. So the, the sons have indicated this is something they're going to try to work on. So.
They even talked about maybe taking that building down too, taking another mansion.
Taking the building down too? So.
That would look better.
Yeah.
So that's where we are with that one. East Bethel Motors or Newtown's Auto Dealers, whichever name they go by and whichever address they go by. 1-8355 or 1-8343. Is still non-compliant. We've worked with them. They'll get into compliance and they'll go back into their activities where they start working on vehicles. Currently, most of the vehicles down there are licensed. Most of them are newer vehicles. They're essentially mostly all Nissans. They are still working on some vehicles in the parking lot. And Stephanie and I have discussed this. This may be a zoning thing that we can look at. So we're going to take a look at it from that direction. But the owner is never been really cooperative in dealing with this. So we want to look at it from a zoning issue and I think there may be some things that we can do there. And we want to have something to present to council here. Either at the end of the August meeting or the September work meeting.
See, Jack, I have a question on that. I think I talked to you earlier that they haven't been licensed for the last two years.
They haven't had a vehicle dealer's license since 2018.
2018, okay.
Their, their rationale for that was they don't sell vehicles there. They sell them out of their North Branch location. So that's what we're looking at is the zoning issue.
Why, why hasn't the state done anything if they don't have a license?
I don't know. That's where we checked to see.
Have we talked to the state and informed the state?
The, the state knows it because that's where we got the list. It was, hasn't been active since 2018.
It's just so awful because that's the first thing everybody sees when they come into town.
So we're, we're going to take a look at this from the zoning application and consult with the city attorney to see if there's any avenues to approach it that way. If not, this would be one that we would probably, you know, we could submit this from the court. But I'm not sure how long it would take to get anything done or if it could be done in a reasonable amount of time. So we'd like to look at it from another direction and then get back to you and then we can decide which way we need to go. The next one is PBS Auto here on the corner of 221st. They've cleaned it a lot up. They're allowed nine tractor trailers to park there. Sometimes they go over a little bit. Stephanie's always in contact with them to remind them if they do. They've done a little work on one of the buildings. And according to them, they're waiting on some materials to finish that one up. So. This is another one that's going to require a lot of monitoring going forward and maybe one we have to look at for quite a while. 4631 Viking Boulevard is a residence that's occupied by Gail Murphy. There was an issue with this in 2017. They did numerous amounts of work in the house with no permits. And some of them was not even complying at that time. There was an inspection done in February of 2017 on this property that revealed numerous violations of electrical, plumbing, structural and work done without permits in the structure. This was assigned for prosecution. There were some issues with that and it was sent back from the court to the city. The city filed to get an administrative search warrant on this in September. We have the warrant now. We have arranged with an independent building official to do an inspection of this that will be done in the very near future, and that means really soon. So the owner has been notified that this will happen. And when it happens, it will be done with a deputy president and the warrant will be served and the inspection will be done. So we'll have more to report on this at an upcoming meeting. Code enforcement cases that are in prosecution are listed in your packet, 1-914 Trial Circle. This involves substantial work with no building permits. And violation of the impervious area within the Shoreland Improvement District. 22879 Staples Street. There's numerous vehicles, junk and nuisance activities on the property. If you recall, when we had our hearing last November, a lady came and was asking for additional time. Saying they couldn't get the work done. Council said we won't do anything until April. We went out, we even waited till the end of April. No work was done. The lady that lives there came in and talked to Nick and I. And we asked her to come back and sit down and have a discussion on this the following week. So at least we could get an outline or a timetable so that we could set some expectations. We haven't heard from her since. They've been issued the citations and this one has been turned over to the city attorney for prosecution at this time. 1-81 Bryant Lane. This is another frequent offender we've had with junk, debris, tires. And numerous amounts of other things that are stored on the property. Also in your packet is a category called outstanding code enforcement cases. Those are listed by address. There are several there for public nuisance, which includes, one of them is for missing siding. This is for a structure that's on Highway 65. We're currently working with them now and hopefully we hope to get that one resolved. If you want, I can go over these individually and we also have pictures of them if you'd like to see them. Generally, the ones for septic non-compliance are those that are triggered by sales. Generally, these are older systems that were put in before the state changed their requirements for separation of the bottom of the drain field from mottled soils. So they may be functional systems, but by definition they're non-compliant. So in order for the sale to be complete, the owners generally have to update these. Standard compliance generally means public nuisance. On several of these, there's still work in progress. We're working with these. We do hope to resolve all of these. The 4855 Viking Boulevard, I was informed, has already been taken care of. So it's resolved. The 316 Aspen Road Deceptic, it was a sale. And it was owned by an older lady, but they decided not to sell it. So it's still in compliant because it only has to meet the new requirements if it's sold. And then you have a list of resolved code enforcement cases. We don't have these by address because it's going to take a little bit more work to pull them out. But we resolved two property maintenance, which included mowing of grass weeds. Two illegal parking, which basically involves street parking or people that parked their boats on the street. Septic imminent health threat. There were two of these where sewage was actually, actually discharged and was on top of the ground. Those two have been taken care of. Septic non-compliance are the same thing. Sales triggered, not compliant because of the MPCA new regulations that were enacted in the late nineties. Six signs, these were signs that were put up with no permits. Those have been taken care of. Standard compliance, which is public nuisance, there were six of those. They basically involve vehicles, debris, the junk in the yard. And vehicles in excess of code limits. There were 20 cases of those. Those generally involved excess of six vehicles or six vehicles plus boats, snowmobiles, four wheels. So there's been a lot of activity. There's been success in code enforcement. It's ongoing. It's, it's a tough job and it never ends. So this is where we are. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. We do have photographs of all of these that we can pull up and show or you can come in and look at them. But this is kind of an update on where we are with the code enforcement cases.
Which, which building is that 20034?
That is a garage building that's just south of Viking, not Viking, but Klondike Drive and Highway 65 on the west side of the highway.
I don't, has anybody ever said anything about Hunter's Inn? You know, the fire department did a thing in there and they said the mold on the basement's four feet up on the wall and.
No.
You know, that's got to be a health threat. I don't, I don't know if you've gotten anything on that?
No, we haven't gotten anything on Hunter's Inn.
That building is.
Yeah. Now, there has been, the, the only thing we've heard on Hunter's Inn was somebody was interested in it here recently. And their idea was just to tear it down and start all over again.
Yes.
I think that's what could happen.
Because their doors were not secured, you know, people could get in there and.
And you pull our auto parts and still interested in purchasing the property and that would be their use of it. They would tear the building down.
Any other questions on the code enforcement report?
Thank you, Jack.
Welcome.
Okay, on to Dangerous Dog update.
As you know, when you've been given information, there was a very serious dog bite incident in the city on Saturday, January the 23rd. It was case number 22160590 from the Anoka County Sheriff's Department. This was an incident that occurred by a, a dog. The dog's name was Broccoli. Owned by Casey Klebs, who gave an address of 10 Main Street, apartment B, Isanty. And the victim was Katie Stevens, 22454 Buchanan Street, East Bethel, Minnesota. And the dog bite occurred at 22741 East Bethel Boulevard. Information on this case was provided to the city by the Anoka County Sheriff's Department. The city did not receive the instant report until July 26th, 2022. And attempts to reach the bite victim were unsuccessful until last Friday. As the victim was in the hospital, she had two surgeries last week. So we tried to reach her by phone and on Friday I drove out there and met with her. Got some information from her and she definitely wanted to pursue this as a dangerous dog incident. And I talked to Chris Nelson and Chris has reviewed the statutes and city ordinance and recommend that the city proceed under Minnesota statute 347, that point 56 in city ordinance 1078, which authorizes the destruction of a dog in certain circumstances. One of these circumstances is that the dog inflicted substantial or great bodily harm. You all have seen the photographs, so you know what the extent of the injuries were. And based on this review, that standard is clearly met. In other discussions with Chris, he recommends that the cleanest and best outcome would be to schedule an administrative hearing for, we had Monday or Tuesday. Actually, it's been set up for tomorrow. Get the information and findings from Isanty County related to the prior dangerous dog determination. And then the hearing officer can order the dog to be euthanized and the Animal Humane Society could proceed with that course. Staff sent a notice of an administrative hearing for the dog bite case to the council on Friday, July 29th. This hearing is needed to be held on such short notice due to the Animal Humane Society's evaluation of the animal, which wasn't received until the late afternoon of Thursday, July 28th. And also the date of quarantine hold expires this Wednesday. The notice has been delivered to the victim of the bite. Delivery was attempted to the dog owner, but the address on the ACSO report was non-existent. The dog owner was contacted through a friend by phone on Friday and we've got her number and then from city staff this morning. The notice is also posted at city hall and meets all the notifications necessary for hearing. The city attorney has also advised that the hearings officer would probably not rule on a stay of quarantine hold date. But the city at a minimum could require that compliance with the Isanty County order to be met prior to any release granted by the Animal Humane Society. So I gave you the wrong information today about the hearings officer could execute a stay. But they cannot meet the requirements of the Isanty requirements for this dog. So that's the way we can control that quarantine hold date. On the administrative hearing, should the hearing be a course council wishes to pursue, the schedule has been set. If council wishes to pursue this matter as an item to be held before the city council. The hearing can be cancelled, cancelled and an emergency meeting can be called for Wednesday or Thursday to address the dangerous dog declaration for this case. And again, the course of action for this recommendation was a discussion between myself and the city attorney. In his opinion, is this the, is the cleanest means to address this situation? It can eliminate challenges of an open meeting law or requirements for notices on special meetings for dangerous dog declarations. While still following within the quarantine hold period. So what I'm seeking is what is council's wish in this? We do have the hearing set up for tomorrow if need be, or we could cancel the hearing and proceed this to be a council action.
So is the outcome from the hearing offered officer enforceable?
Yes.
So, so it's their direction. It's not city council though?
Yeah. So you have in your ordinances pretty much mirror for mirror with 347.56. And it's that once that impartial decision maker has ruled, then it meets the requirements of 347.56, which is those certain circumstances. If a dog inflicts substantial or great bodily harm on a human without provocation, the dog may be destroyed by the animal control authority.
And that, and that would be the hearing officer?
The animal control authority would be the humane society.
And the hearing officer is the one who is providing the opportunity before an impartial decision maker. So there's two parts to the statute and it's, one is that the, the animal control authority can destroy the dog. If it meets that requirement, that substantial or great bodily harm. So we've already got that. But under subdivision two, you need to have a, a hearing. So that that dog owner does have the opportunity to be heard before that impartial decision maker. And once you have subdivision one and two met, then the animal control authority can move forward with destruction of the dog. Which has been their recommendation. It's surprising to hear.
What happens if the owner doesn't show up? Is it automatically?
They have the opportunity for a hearing. So that's met. That, even if they don't show up.
So it's not, it's not even a city action at all? All right, it's between the humane society and the hearing officer. Where does this facilitate?
Well, the hearing officer is appointed by the city. So he is a representative of the city in this case.
Okay. I, I'm just used to all these going through city council and, and having, having.
I don't think there's time for city council to act on this one unless there's a way.
There was. That, that, that was, that was the discussion I had with Jack today.
And I had a follow-up discussion with Chris, but he says this was a lot cleaner than trying to do an emergency meeting.
Well, I understand, but that was, council didn't get the option about it. That's, that was my concern on it. But I mean, I think what's being done is right. I mean, what. what's being done is right. I mean, what, what, it has to be done without doubt, so. Okay, any questions? It's noticed, so as many council members can be at the hearing tomorrow, it's, it's public, right?
That's correct.
So, okay.
Council does not have to be there, but it is noticed.
Okay. All right.
There was some discussion about having the city attorney present at that hearing. So I just wanted to note that Chris and I think that it wouldn't be the right decision to have us there because if that party does show up, it's likely that they aren't represented. And then you have, you know, the city being represented by an attorney and an individual not represented by an attorney, which might make things feel kind of wrong for that individual and.
Well, I, I would agree because like, my view on it, the city doesn't have a decision in this at all. We've delegated that to, you know, our impartial.
The hearing officer.
They can't appeal to us, you know, so why would our city attorney be involved, so. Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's see what happens tomorrow. I think that's our agenda. Make a motion adjourn.
Okay.
Motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Christine.
Thanks for letting me.